For this meeting, for this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation, so please rise.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful to be able to live in this country that you've blessed so much, and we pray, Father, your continued blessing on our federal government, our state government, and our local government that impacts us so much. We pray for our council members tonight that you'd give them wisdom and understanding. Father, we pray for those who stand in need that you'd be merciful unto them. We do pray and ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer to the matter of a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city, city council members, or employees, as well as individuals, individual persons' appeal are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there is anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Williams, and I live in Paris, Texas. And I have two things that I'm dealing with. One of them is that how much information should you give the Paris policemen when they come out to your house? Okay, the last time they come out to my house, I had to give them my social security card, my social security number, and my driver's license. Knowing your social security number, you usually don't give them no more than four numbers, and that's what I told the officer. I don't want to give you my whole number. And he talked like he was going to arrest me if I didn't. So I gave him my number. And I feel like prior to me giving him my number, I'm starting to have, I went to court and had to go through some, they wouldn't have known it if they hadn't have got my whole social security number. Okay? And another thing is I was about some land that I had that they said they mowed, and they didn't mow it. Okay? We went through the whole process, and I found out that they did not mow the land. But I would have to pay the fee for them saying they did. And if you don't do that, that's a lien on your property, and that's not right. And I want to know, how do I go by addressing that issue? Because, you know, they came out, and we walked through it, and the land was not mowed. But so far, I hadn't had to pay the fee. They went ahead on and dropped it. But all this that I had to go through just to prove the fact that they didn't come out there and mowed it, I don't want this to happen to anybody else that won't, won't be able to go through the process like I did. I want it to be a certain rule and regulation and law that they can't do this.
Williams, can we get the property location? Can we get the property location that was mowed?
The property location was on Vans and Street. Let me see, what is it next to? It's behind, on the other side of the street where Martin Luther King.
Is it the church?
Yes, the TruVine Church. That's what I was trying to think of. Yeah, the TruVine Church.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we will close the Citizens Forum. Oh?
I'm sorry, I came in late, and so I don't know your protocol. I do have an issue. Can I speak?
Please step forward.
I don't know who contracted...
Sorry, ma'am. Do you mind stating your name?
My name is Sharon Smith, and I live at 925 Metalus Street, Paris, Texas. I do not know who contracted Cards Trash. I believe it was the city. And when they first started, which I really miss, the original, that was under contract with Paris Water. But when Cards first started, they were going to go strictly to the front roads and the front of the houses. Well, our area is mostly made of senior, senior citizens, and a lot of them couldn't bring that hard, heavy compactor out to the front because they'd have to go over their grass. So I contacted Cards and explained that to them, and they were very kind. The city was very kind to accommodate us. However, what my question is, is who oversees Cards as to whether or not they're fulfilling their commitment and doing what they should be doing? Who oversees that?
It's a city contract.
Okay. Since they've been going into the alley, and with the fact that they don't have manpower to pick up the trash cans, and they use the electrical arm, what they do is they come down the alley one way, pick up the trash, they have to turn around, and they have to come back again. What they're doing is they are destroying the yards as they turn into the alley. I have pictures of it. It's happened every time. It's not just the rain. It's when they enter that alley, they're going over at least four feet or more of people's grass, and they're destroying it. We have, you know how people will put rocks for a border to keep any car or anything from going over their grass? They tear that down. They tear down the stake that's been put up with a red flector. So I'm just bringing my complaint to see how we can control this situation. Other than that, I have no complaints with them.
Thank you.
Will it be taken care of? I'm here for an answer.
I'm now having you with Mr. Smith. He's a Pub Works Director, and he can, he can work with you on those issues.
Thank you very much for your time.
Ma'am, ma'am, you forgot your purse.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approve, approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda for the discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to regular, to the regular agenda. Agenda item number 12. Discuss and conduct a public hearing and act on an ordinance regarding the petition of Riley Dewitt on behalf of Jason and Whitney Buller for a specific use permit, tattoo studio in the Central Area District, CA, City of Paris, Block 11, Lot 7, LCAD 13685, located at 130 North Main Street. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, Duke McGee, the building official. The applicant proposes to expand their existing hair salon and permanent makeup business to include tattooing, interior building space layouts, been included in your packet. Staff has received no inputs either for or against this. P&amp;Z voted six to, six to zero to approve it for SGP for, hold on, for a tattoo parlor, and staff recommends the approval. Also, with the following conditions: update the certificate of occupancy to include tattoos, the business owner shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws, and the SGP terminate at the vacation of the premises.
Fantastic. I will open up the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Agenda item number 13. Discuss, conduct, and act on an ordinance regarding the petition of Deborah Jackson on, on behalf of MLMC Texas Investments LLC for a specific use permit. Childcare center in a multifamily dwelling district number two, MF2, City of Paris, Block 220A, Lot 9A and 6, LCAD 22040, located at 1905 East Price Street. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes. The applicant proposes to relocate her current daycare business, which is out of town, to 1905 East Price Seat, Price Street. The location was formerly a daycare center, but had been recently updated to student housing, so they wanted to go back to that. These, significant improvements made to include sprinkler systems, and so the facility's a lot safer. Staff did receive one negative, or one input form in opposition to this. P&amp;Z voted six to zero to approve the SGP for a daycare facility, and staff also recommends approval of SGP to a daycare facility with the same conditions as the previous.
Thank you, sir. I will open the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to know what, you know, I'm sorry, Duke, you already left, but what was the opposition to the childcare?
The opposition was that it would negatively impact property value.
Okay, okay.
Duke, I've got a quick question. So that, that student housing is totally off the table, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's not the same developer?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just curious. Okay.
Yeah, and I've toured the building, so as Councilmember Moore, and the guy made a lot of significant changes and put a lot of money in that building, so it's, it's a very nice building, and I think it'd be a great location for a childcare. I don't understand about the hurting value, you know, property value, because he put a lot of work into it. It's a total upgrade, so I see no problem with it.
Yes, I agree.
All right, good deal. Is there any further discussion? If none, I will hear a motion.
So moved.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. Motion carries five zero. Agenda item number 14. Discuss and consider an ordinance approving the issuance and sale of a City of Paris, Texas Accommodation Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificate, Certificates of Obligation, Series 2024, and approving, approving various documents related to such certificates of obligation. Gene?
Mayor, pro tem, council members. Back in January, the council approved us to issue a notice of intention resolution, in the intention being that we would issue certificates of obligation sufficient to do the final phase of the wastewater treatment plant. So with that approval, our city financial advisor, Samco Capital, and our legal counsel, McCall Parkhurst and Horton, worked with city staff to get that process going. And we're at the point where the next step is to adopt an ordinance authorizing that issuance and sale of those certificates of obligation. We have Andrew Friedman here tonight from Samco Capital, and he wants to say a little bit about this matter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Andrew Friedman with Samco Capital Markets. Before you all this evening is the ordinance to approve the sale. The underwriters went out into the market this morning. We've got a bid to underwrite in hand, interest rates better than we were expecting through this process, and of course, we're borrowing significantly less money than had been anticipated in the months leading up to this, as you all have worked to get the budget in line for the project. So, again, very pleased with it. Interest rates came in about 4.18% for this 30-year amortization. We've been planning closer to 5% out of an abundance of caution, but it's been a smooth day in the market. With your approval this evening, the funds would be delivered to the city on April 8th, at which point you'll, I know, be letting the project and awarding that bid for construction. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. Grayson or Gene, if I've left anything out that you'd like me to make the council aware of, I'm certainly happy to do that, but very pleased with the result for the markets today.
Okay, nope, I think we're good.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll say one thing. I just wanted to say, I know the staff has been working really hard to kind of bring the, the cost down of this Phase 2, and the project as a whole. I know we're in really uncertain times, but, boy, I count that as a real blessing, that we've, we've had some success in, in the rates that we've gotten, so that's good news, and that's about as good as it gets. So I appreciate all the work that the staff and everyone has put forth in this endeavor. All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, can I hear a motion? Got a, got a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, those that disapprove, say no. All right. Motion carries five zero. Agenda item number 15. Discuss and consider authorization for the Building Department to issue an RFP for third-party administrative services to pursue grant funding for the BCEGS rating improvements. Staff?
Yes, the Building Department is currently seeking to improve our BSEGs rating and to receive Building Department accreditation. BSEGs, which is Building Code Efficiency Grading Schedule, is a program administered by ISO, which evaluates the Building Department how we adopt, enforce, and process codes in building permits and applications. Our current BSEG rating is six. The scale is from one to 10, one being the best, 10 being the worst. So we'd like to improve that, that rating for us. With improved BSEGs rating for the Building Department, it directly affects the, the community's insurance on the ISO side. Our, where's Clyde? I said that wrong. It was, it's the ISO, Fireman's side, Fireman's side of the ISO. Yeah. And improves the commercial residential insurance rates. And then on the BSEG side, what it does is it affects our ability to receive federal fundings in case of a natural disaster. So a lower BSEG rating, they could be used to deny relief funding. So we are currently in the process of performing the necessary work that's needed to achieve a better rating, and some of this comes at an expense. There are multiple funding opportunities out there, especially through FEMA, and we'd like to start pursuing those, which would require an RFP to obtain those services. This, these particular grants that we're looking at have no grant matching, so it's zero effect on the budget. And the options are to authorize staff to, to issue an RFP for third-party grant administration services, the ultimate goal of seeking grant funding to help achieve our BSEG goals, and request, are to request additional information and not proceed. Of course, we would like option number one.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Is there any discussion?
You, you mentioned building permit accreditation, so...
Building Department accreditation.
Building Department accreditation.
Yeah.
So explain that to me.
Building Department accreditation is a third-party accreditation that, that goes through IAS, and currently, there's only four building departments in the state of Texas that has that accreditation. Increasing our BSEG rating would give us that accreditation. It's, it's a prestige thing.
Okay.
It, it really is. Again, like I said, there's only four building departments in the state of Texas that has that accreditation, and I'd like to see Paris be number five.
Is it possible to lose accreditation?
Yes, it is. It's, it's evaluated every three years.
Every three years.
Once you get, they'll come in, they'll, they'll send their people in, they'll evaluate the Building Department processing, how we issue permits, how we enforce codes, how we do our plan review, how we do our training, how, you know, how we do our transparent, there's a whole list, 14 pages of stuff that we have to work on. But this goes hand in hand with our BSEGs ratings. So if, if we have accreditation, it almost guarantees us an improved score on our BSEGs. Our BSEGs rating in the state of Texas, you could only get a two in the state of Texas right now, because we don't have the ability to enforce sprinkler systems in single-family homes. We've been incentivizing that, and I'm working, currently working with boat to see if we can get an exemption letter from FEMA that I would like to see Paris be the first city in the state of Texas to get a one for a BSEGs rating.
So, so, you know, my mind, I'm ignorant of all this, so if you use the scale like from A through F, where would Paris rank right now?
You're gonna make me do math and alphabet at the same time.
I know it wouldn't be an A, because that's what we're seeking, so would it be like a B, R, C?
Yeah, we, we, we would, right now, we're in the lower, we're in the low, if you're looking at it, that we're in the lower 40 percentile.
Okay.
Right now, we're a six out of 10.
Yeah.
So, I know, when I arrived, we, when I arrived, we were like a nine out of 10, but we made changes, started enforcing codes, and so we were able to get to a six. To your question, accreditation, is this like the police department accreditation and also the fire department pursuing? Accreditation means that we're, we're following best practices in, in the, in the field, and so to achieve that means, it shows the world, shows everyone that, that our department has, has achieved and is following standard, standard-recognized best practices. So with that, we, through our policies, through our actions, through our, through our processes, it shows that we measure up with the best, that, 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 when you come work, when you come and work with Paris, you're receiving the best measure out there that, of all standards. So that's what we're trying to pursue there.
And that's, that's just not a Texas state standard.
Right.
That's across the United States.
So, go ahead.
You mentioned no costs, so the third-party administrator will build their cost into the grant that they're getting?
Yes, yes.
Got a question. So I know, I know off the fire side, we're talking about the, you know, our residential commercial insurance rates would, would get lowered, but that, that wouldn't be a part of this, correct?
This affects it kinda, what's happening right now in, in the world of code? Last year, FEMA basically took over BSEGs. They become the 80% customer, so they provide 80% of BSEGs, ISO's funding. So FEMA came in and said, this is how you're gonna do things, and they said, okay, yes, that's the way we'll do it. And then Verarisk actually took over ISO as a third party. So they're, they're pushing, you know, codes and everything, because it's life safety. And in, in 2010, when building codes came out, international codes came out, historically, there was about 500,000 deaths related to structural failures, fire, that kind of stuff. Since the adoption of building code, that's been reduced to 45,000 annual. So they're saying this is working, and now they're looking at cost of reconstruction. This cost of reconstruction after natural disasters or climate events has grown significantly. So they're saying, let's, let's pour some money into this, let's get these things set up so that we can reduce the cost of reconstruction after natural disasters and climate events and suchnot, or construction site failure, structural failures, and stuff like that. So this is, that's kind of the push for the building codes going forwards, and that's why this funding is becoming available, because it's, 2022, we had 18 significant, what they called climate events, weather events, and it totaled $168 billion is what it cost the federal government. So they're trying to do things, try to get ahead of this, and I'd like Paris to be on that wave as it goes, you know, goes forward.
If we were approved for the grant, you would come back to us and show us, I guess, what all changes would be done to building code at that point?
Which, it's not really changing building code. Okay, we're keeping the same, same codes. It's more in the process of how we process things, or how we adopt things, or the accountability in the Building Department. So, and having clear written policies and procedures. And like I said, a lot of these things, we've already been in the process of doing, updating our software, getting written policies and procedures for, you know, individual things, coming up with, you know, when we do our plan review, we'll have somebody else come back and double-check that plan review. Just best practices, like, like Grayson was saying, it's just implementing best practices in, in the Building Department.
But at any point, yes, any department, including the Building Department, can always give a report to the council about changes we're making, about policy, procedure. At any point, the council would like to request that we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to. More people to know about going on in the Building Department makes my job easier.
So, so kind of in layman's terms, since we're already doing best practices, right? We're already sticking to the standard. So are we saying that we're trying to step up our game within the standards? We, we might see opportunity where we can reevaluate things and even go higher. So that's how we're gonna achieve this higher rating, right?
Yes.
And I might be missing this point, so our, our grant opportunities are tied to our higher rating, right? Or am I wrong on that?
No, they're to help us achieve that. When we was talking with Grant Works...
I think, I think, were you talking about the, the federal grants?
Yes.
For, in case of disasters?
Yes.
Oh, the relief? Yeah.
What we're saying is, a, a community that does non-enforce codes is likely, is not likely to get much funding.
Right.
And so communities that do enforce codes, they're likely to get funding because they know we're gonna build it right back right.
So this, this rating is tied to that?
Yes.
But we need the funding, this, I guess, the other grant that we're talking about, this, what the third party's gonna help us with, is to achieve a higher rating. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, some of these things have expenses tied to it. I mean, there's things that we can do in-house, but some of these things, we might as well get reimbursed on. I mean, our staff are doing a lot of the work themselves, but this grant, as we were seeing here, it can, it can reimburse staff time, which is tax dollars...
Right.
...for the work we did.
And I, I don't perceive that anybody's against it. We're just trying to understand it, because it's over our head.
And some of the stuff we can be reimbursed for, like, there's hours and hours and hours of research in the state law, federal law, building codes themselves, to make sure that we're applying, you know, best practices or implementing these. So there's a lot of staff time tied up into it, and we have, and, and it is reimbursable. We have been keeping track of our, our, you know, what we're doing, that the PDC, which we'll be talking about in the next agenda item, all the hours and stuff that we spent on that, there's a potential for that to be reimbursed to the city. Doing our legacy permits...
If you can get the microphone, please.
Oh, sorry. And to our legacy permits, we're going back and updating all of our computer software and getting those all in there so they're easily searchable. That can all be reimbursed. There's, anything that could be related to best practices has a potential, I don't want to say will be reimbursed, but has the potential to be reimbursed. A, a good point, what I was saying with the grant funding and stuff, is we just had that tornado last year in north of us. That was classified, and I might get this wrong, if I, Clyde, if you could just talk about that for just a second, that cost, that...
Clyde, go ahead, come up.
Yeah, I need you in the microphone, because the more answers, the more questions y'all answer, the fewer phone calls I get.
And to the extent we can kind of keep this to the, the actual agenda item, which is the approval of doing the RFP for the third-party administrator, we don't want to get too far out in the weeds of, of different considerations.
So, so like you was, he was bringing up when the tornadoes, now it's been two Christmases ago when they came through Lamar County. NOAA, a federal agency, came out, they evaluated the lost structures. In order to receive grant funding from FEMA for reimbursement for the cost, the losses, you know, to get the, the disaster declarations, you have to achieve an F3 tornado status to get the FEMA funding. They came out, looked at the slabs and stuff, and said, we don't see the right construction practices in this area of the county. So they had to classify, even though they saw level three, F3 damage, they had to classify it as an F2, and they left, and that was gonna be their report. They came back like three or four days later after reviewing some pictures, and they found one structure in Lamar County that met the level of construction standards for the way it was mounted to the foundation, and they classified the tornado an F3, which now lets Lamar County residents and people get that recovery money from the federal government. So, and, and that's where this comes in to help, because it helps us...
Good explanation. Thank you.
So, so again, that would be a staff recommendation, so that we can go ahead and proceed with the RFP.
And the reason for a third party is, these federal grants, they have a lot of administration tied to them, and a lot of reporting, and timelines and deadlines, and follow-ups, and we could do that, but it'd be time away from the work we're doing to try to get these BSEGs, and so a third party would be paid for by the grant, and, and they'd get all the hoops to make the federal government happy with the reporting. We do this like for our, we do it for our home program, we do it for our CBG's, the same thing as that.
And if any of the council members of you had any further questions on that or anything like that, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and explain or show you what we're doing, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. If none, then I'll, I'll hear a motion.
Do we, do we have to make a motion on this?
Yes, please do, because you're authorizing us to go forward with the RFP.
I'll make them, go ahead, Rudy.
I move to approve item 15, as presented, and move forward with RFQ.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. All right. Agenda item number 16. Receive a presentation on the status of the Paris Development Code, PDC. Staff?
Like we were just referring to, in, in February of last year, the PDC Committee was formed to consolidate, simplify, and unify the city's development regulations. The goal is to produce a code that aligns with the various city plans, is up-to-date, and relevant, and easy for...
and relevant, and easy for officials to interpret and administer, and is clear for developers and the general public to understand and follow. This agenda item is intended to provide the entire city council a summary of where this project is and what we foresee for the next steps. We're currently at about 75% complete with the document, with the draft of the PDC. It will then be reviewed again by the panel of the HPC, the P&amp;Z, and the city council representative for content, userability, and formatting. The draft PDC must also then go proceed for a full regal, legal review to the city's attorney's office, and then at that time, so there's still several steps to go, but at that time, we'd like to bring it back and present it to the city council, and our rep, our recommendation is to present it in chunks. It's, it's a pretty voluminous book. It's eight chapters, about 500 pages, and a lot of information in there, so, and, and we'll, as that gets closer, we'll bring another update to you and let you know how that's proceeding. And again, if there's any questions on that or anything like that, I'd be glad to sit down with any councilmember and, and kind of go over that with them in the future.
I just, I have, I got one comment. You have worked really hard on this, you and the team, the whole staff. I know that's a pretty intense, 500-some-odd pages that we've tried to review through, but it's, it's a good read, and I think it'll end up making things so much easier for anyone that wants to develop or that's interested in development within our community and growing. So I appreciate that kind of one, one-stop-shop approach, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have developer input on this?
We, we actually have multiple sources of input. We've, it, it's laid out in a full memo, but we've looked at our city ordinances, we've looked at state code, we've looked at federal law, we've looked at other cities that have development codes or have implemented some of these things. We've got like this, local contractors and business owners involved in some of the process. Because it spans our entire development code, like the, like historic preservation is kind of looking at chapter six, which deals with the historic district, and they're looking at that, making sure it fits with all the different plans and going over that. So there's, we, we don't want to get, be premature and bring it to you in, in an unedited version, because there may be some stuff in there that gets deleted that, you know, you, you may have, like, hey, this don't sound good, or what about, you know, I never, hey, it's coming out anyways, you know, so. But again, like I say, if you have other questions that you want to see where we're at in the draft or anything like that, I'd be, I'd be happy, more than happy.
But, but some contractors have looked at certain sections.
Yes.
And they like what's.
Yes.
It's easy to workable thing for them.
Yes, and, and developers, not just contractor, but developers too.
Okay.
And we've actually worked with some developers and some of the, the pre-development coming in, like, we had one come in with a tiny homes, and we're like, well, here's our ordinance right now, but here's what we're trying to get, and we've tried to work with them and say, hey, you know, let's see if we can come up with something that matches, you know, it works for both, where we're, we're maintaining public safety, we're, we're maintaining our, our ordinances and making it easier for the developer. It, it's trying to be developer-friendly while still maintaining public safety.
All right. Thank you, Duke. Agenda item number 17, discuss and consider changing the April 8th to the 2024 city council meeting to April 9th, 2024. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, at the last council meeting, you all briefly discussed moving the meeting of April the 8th to April the 9th due to the eclipse, and we can do that, but staff is recommending that we stay on schedule, just looking forward at future agendas.
Is there any, any discussion?
My two cents worth, I think we should stay on schedule. It, it was either or for me, but I think we should stay on schedule just for notification purposes. I know people that might do presentations might not have time to change their schedules or timing of meetings and things, so I think we should stay on schedule if we can.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
I concur, and I, I think that it would, it would probably be best that we keep it, that date in, in plan to proceed forward, so if, if there's no further discussion, we'd like to hear a motion.
So moved.
Motion in a.
I make the motion to keep it on April the 8th, 2024, city council meeting.
A second.
All right, motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Agenda item number 18, discuss and act on a resolution approving residential tax abatement agreement with Gary Cook, Adam Bolton, PM Investments LLC as part of the Five and Five Housing and Infield Development Program for the City of Paris, Block 199, Lot S of 2, located at 1610 Bonham Street pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 22303 and the Texas, Texas Tax Code Section 312 dot 2011. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I have a, a short one. This is something that's under our Five and Five program for a 380 development under the Texas Local Government Code and a tax abatement under Chapter 312 of the Tax Code. This is for PW Investments LLC. The property is located at 1610 Bonham Street, and it is for a seven-dwelling unit, single structure. So the, the 380 portion has to do with tap fees and inspection fees and review fees. There won't be any transfer of city trustee properties under this agreement. The applicant already owns the property. And then the tax abatement, all these incentives are in line with the program and the properties within the program area, and staff recommends that you approve a, a resolution approving the Five and Five agreement with, well, it says InvestFanning, but it's PW Investments.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Is there any discussion?
So the fact that we kind of put a hold on the Five and Five does not affect some of these that were already in line to come to us, right?
Yes, sir. This is one of three applicants that we're still processing.
Okay. Just wanted to clear that up.
Yes, sir.
Any other further discussion? All right, if none, then we'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Agenda item number 19, consider and approve future events for the city council and/or city staff pursuant to Resolution Number 2004 dash 081.
Stephanie, you can shut me down if I'm saying this.
Oh, no.
It's every, every week, every or two weeks anyway, but I think we need to follow up. I think Mr. Vine has already done this, but just to make sure, I think we need to follow up with Carolyn Williams on the two items that she presented, and I think he's already taken care of that, but if not, we need to take care of that. Thank you.
I've, I've already been texting staff as we go along here, giving out assignments on people, so.
Good deal.
Awesome. Any, anything else?